The, uh, call the meeting to order at this time. Uh, please.
Evan.
Here.
Kellidonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groblin.
Here.
Lester. Lima.
Here.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Here.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here. I'd like to ask, uh, Nunde Supervisor, may I leave while for please to meet up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, uh, meeting minutes for your consideration. The first, uh, is our last, uh, meeting of, uh, 2023, uh, on the 20th of December. Uh, does anyone have any changes that they'd like to bring forward at this time? During none, I look for a motion in the second.
Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we had our organizational meeting this January. Is everyone okay with the content of those three after minutes? If everyone's okay, I look for a motion in the second, and most please.
Lester.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. It's carried. Um, Ian, uh, we have a public hearing. Uh, if you please introduce that.
Yeah, so, uh, Local Law Number E 2023, adopting the 2024 salary revisions. Uh, this is a carryover from conversations that happen in the budget process. It happens in the budget process every year. Uh, once the budget is approved with the corresponding salary schedule. Any, uh, term of office holders, or anyone that has a management employee that has a term of office, or an elected official that has a term of office, that is being considered for a salary increase, uh, no matter what the amount within that term of office, is subject to a separate and independent local law process. Um, so the county has always followed this process, and this is the public hearing to, uh, associate with that local law.
Thank you, Ian. I'll declare the hearing open at this time. I'll ask if there's any member of the public wishing to comment on this public hearing. Uh, if you would, uh, please come forward, sign in at the pollings, and we have the opportunity to address the board. Here none, I'd ask if there's any supervisor at this time wishing to address, uh, the board. We'll leave, uh, the public hearing open until the end of the meeting, and I'll ask those same questions again. Um, we do have one communication for each of the panel.
Thank you, Ms. Shelby.
Thank you. Um, we do have, uh, two abstracted claims for consideration.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move this first abstracted claim and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Na. Is there any, uh, question or discussion on this first abstracted claims for consideration? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move this second abstracted claim and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Na. Are there any questions or concerns on this set of claims against the county? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Next, we have requests for privileges before.
Chairman, I request privileges of Laura, the Republican Commissioner, Gary. Take with me.
Thank you, Mr. Na.
Perfect. Uh, thank you for giving us a couple of minutes today to, uh, talk about our, uh, 2024 I Voted sticker contest. Uh, one of the priorities of the Board of Elections is voter engagement, particularly younger, uh, students in Livingston County. With the fervor around the upcoming election and, uh, the discussions that are undoubtedly taking place both inside and outside of the classroom, we thought this would be a great time, uh, for the Board of Elections to reach out to those younger voters, uh, but hopefully give rise to some conversation in our local schools that, uh, hopefully we can be a part of as well. Uh, with that in mind, we will be launching our I Voted sticker contest. Uh, so quite simply, how they can participate is to redesign the, uh, ever-famous I Voted sticker, um, that is handed out to each voter that leave the poll site. This can be a digital creation, so they can create it electronically on a computer, or they can, uh, design it, uh, hand-drawn, uh, sticker, or a mixture of both. Uh, we're looking for the stickers to be, um, show their civic pride and eagerness to vote. Um, so the contest will open on February 15th, close March 29th. At that point, the BOE team will narrow the entries to the top five. We will then allow the public to choose the ultimate winner. Uh, the sticker will then, then be used throughout the 2024 general election in November, uh, the March, uh, village elections in '25, and the May school election in '25 as well, and any other election we'll have until next summer. At that point, we'll, uh, have another contest and pick a new, uh, winner for 2025. Uh, a couple of rules that we put together. Um, all the contest entries must be in the fifth through 12th grades at the time of entry, and it could be open to anyone enrolled in Livingston County School District or a homeschool program. Must be original work, uh, can't use any stock images, uh, obviously nothing offensive. Uh, all entries must include the words "I voted." Uh, artwork must be nonpartisan, and they could submit it to us in any digital or physical form. Um, and, and we're actually going to use it for any social media marketing materials. Uh, as you'll see, uh, a partner county of ours uses it quite a bit. And this is actually Ulster County who we worked with, or I worked with, to, uh, uh, put this together. Uh, that's their, um, BOE team, uh, two commissioners, uh, the young lady who won and her family, and, uh, some of their county administrators. Uh, they voted through an online portal, uh, they had thirty-three hundred votes. This is Ulster County. Uh, the ultimate winner was down at the bottom, uh, left there with the Statue of Liberty. And really, we use the, we plan to use this kind of as our own marketing, uh, going through, uh, 2024 and into 2025. Um, and hopefully we'll get some good participation, um, and create some conversations around the county with the student bodies. I think that's all we have. That would be the best way, so they can disseminate it. Uh, some of the younger kids might, um, participate through social studies class, some of the older kids, uh, possibly through government class, or even in our class. So, we'll let them decide how they want to each participate.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have some resolutions to forward, gentlemen.
Appointing members to the Livingston County Environmental Management Council. Robert Dunn, Susan Walker, Raymond Case, Dan Disarn, Katie Fish, Patty E. Levine, Darlene Lancaster, Alexander Pierce, and Paula Smith. Appointing voting representatives to the Inter-County Association of Western New York for the year 2024. White Map, David LeCever, Michelle Reese, and Donald Wester. Appointing members to the Livingston County Traffic Safety Board. Ronald Beach III, Stephen Mingus, Donald Wester, Gary Sparks, Larry Levy, Matthew Griffo, Tanner Harvey, Douglas Apelin, Paul Dwyer, and Eric Goff.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any discussion on any of the content of these resolutions? Here none, I look for a motion in the second to bring it to a vote.
So moved. Davis. Second. Westworth.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. It's carried. Uh, hold on just please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
We do have some resolutions that are going to be required.
Mrs. Walker. Authorizing professional services contract for laboratory services for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation. You are a medicine lab.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this contract? Here, here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for Livingston County Department of Health. Geneseo Central School District, Lethbridge Central School District, and Nicholas Noyes Memorial Hospital. You are a medicine. There are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on any of these contracts? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan. Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for Livingston County Department of Social Services. Casa Terminus Kennedy, Inc. There are two. Childcare Council, Inc. New York State Office of Children and Family Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Authorizing the Commissioner of Social Services to sign contracts for the following. Livingston County Attorney, Livingston County Information and Technology Services, Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Livingston County Veteran Services Agency, Livingston County Workforce Development, and Livingston County Youth Bureau.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this, uh, resolution? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for Livingston County Office for the Aging. Guardian Angel Social Adult Day Service Doing Businesses Guardian Angel Social Adult Day Services, S.A.S., and Vera Realty Doing Businesses Willow Creek Fund.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Mr. Demme. Authorizing professional services contract for conference center audio and video upgrades. Solutions.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Authorizing a professional services contract for the engineering design right-of-way construction support and construction inspection phases of a bridge New York Culver replacement project. Kearney Hollow Road Culver over Kearney Hollow Creek, Town of Springwater. Pin number four B NY sixty-two, Ervin Anthony.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this hearing? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima. Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Authorizing a professional services contract for the engineering design right-of-way incidentals and construction support phases of a bridge New York Bridge Rehabilitation Project. New York State DOT pins four B NY forty-seven and four B NY forty-eight. Gibson Street over Mill Creek, B I N two-two-five-six-three-three-zero, and White Bridge Road over Kansas Rega Creek, B I N three-three-one-six-seven-seven-zero, in the Village of D'Anto in the towns of West Sparta and Sparta. C H A Consulting, E.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Boarding bid for Livingston County for public safety car parts and accessories. Various contractors.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this bid? Yes, Mr. Davis.
I guess I don't quite understand. In other words, anything that breaks down motor vehicle wise, they're going to get to bring the parts to you or get them from there? Now, is it, they giving you a specific percentage off, or what's the deal with this?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's mainly for the upfitting of, uh, emergency response vehicles and sheriff vehicles and the, and the possibility that exists at present when you do them individually, uh, you kind of butt up against the kind of aggregate purchasing limit. So, uh, in working with, uh, with Ashley, uh, the best way to do it for procurement is to do, uh, kind of a single, uh, bid that ends up being, uh, various contractors bidding on a single bid. I know it's kind of confusing, but, um, so, I think there's, I think, three potential vendors that can be involved in this mix. So, there'll be, you know, whatever one's available, whatever one has the best price, but they'll be off of this bid as opposed to, in the past, it was either RFP, RFQ, individual bid, which, you know, you got some timing issues there. Uh, if you're under the dollar limits and you do it two or three times, then you, you're over the dollar limits, and unbeknownst to us, that was a violation potentially of the procurement law. So, um, this is kind of a new way of addressing an old problem.
Okay. I would just never seen it before.
Yeah, that's why. Yeah, yup, yup, that's why.
Any other questions or comments before we consider voting? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six-twenty-six, adopted.
Mr. Na. Amending the 2024 Livingston County Budget Contempt Sheet. There are two. Sheriff's Office, there are three.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Na. Are there any questions or comments on these budget amendments? Here none, all please to shell.
Evan.
Aye.
Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen, Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six twenty-six, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds to services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Here in none, will please, Michelle.
Eva, Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen, Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six twenty-six, adopted. Establishing an OEM LCS, oh, storage facility at Hampton Corners.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or comments on establishing this account? Here in none, will please, Michelle.
Eva, Kellidonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen, Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six twenty-six, adopted. Authorizing allocation of American Rescue Plan Funds. Livingston County Emergency Management and Livingston County Sheriff's Office Storage Facility at Hampton Corners.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or comments on this use of other funding? Here in none, will please, Michelle.
Eva, Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima. Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen, Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six twenty-six, adopted. Establishing petty cash amounts for various departments for the year 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution?
Eva, Kellidonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen, Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six twenty-six, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a letter of engagement for legal services. Law offices of Peter Case.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Here in none, will please, Michelle.
Eva, Kellidonia, Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima. Livonia. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen, Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six twenty-six, adopted. Requesting the New York State Senate and the New York State Assembly to amend the not-for-profit corporation law to allow a crematorium operated by a funeral entity to add an additional retort solely for the use in an instance of mechanical or technical failure.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Nap. Are there any questions or comments on this resolution? Here in none, will please, Michelle.
Eva, Kellidonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester, Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Danville, Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen, Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Ayes forty-four twenty-eight, absent six twenty-six, adopted. Authorizing the purchase of seven new 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe PPVs for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office.